Hi, good evening. I wanted to call the March 15th Board Supervisors Meeting to order. The time is 7:00 PM. Board, we need an approval of the agenda. I would like to propose that we amend the agenda by removing Section 11, uh, items A and B that are related to updates from Ms. Claudia Tucker since she could be on, could not be with us this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the said recommendation.
So moved? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Very good. All right, if you would, please rise and join me in the invocation which will be led by Mr. Ayers and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Wade.
Let us pray. Heavenly most gracious, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to assemble here tonight to discuss the business of our community. Father, we pray a special blessing today on the uncertainty of our world as it is now. A special blessing on those folks in Ukraine and the many tragedies that have taken place there. Father, we ask that you lay your hand on this situation with Russia, Ukraine, and the instability all across the world right now and give all of those in charge the guidance and the blessings they need to make the right decisions. Father, be with our military as they're standing on foreign lands to protect us in so many ways and to give us our liberties that we so enjoy each and every day. Be with our law enforcement, our fire and EMS as they stand in harm's way each and every day so that our communities can be as safe as they are. Be with us now as we move forward with the business of the county. Give us the strength, the courage, and the wisdom to make decisions that are pleasing to you and beneficial to our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we are at the part of our agenda for the first citizen comments. I believe the first person that has signed up is a Mr. Gregory Snyder. You want to come forward?
How are you, all doing?
How are you, Mr. Snyder?
I live on Was Ferry Crossing off of 130 and, off 130 up there. And I was told by VDOT if in order to get my road repaired, it would have to go through Supervisors Meeting. So what I have is I have like about a half a mile before my house, the asphalt stops or surface treated or whatever you want to call it. And what I have is just like gray mush. And so every year they got to come in and motor grade and they put down some kind of gravel and it just disappears. Well, I thought it might be a better idea if there were some way we could put down, I don't know, something, you know, the old tore up, you know, how they tear up a road, maybe tarred it or something. And in the summertime, it gets so dusty because it's like a fine, it's not like gravel, it's, you actually sink in it when, you know, when it gets rain or snow on it. So I thought, I don't know how much money they allocate for roads anymore, but I thought if there was any way possible that we could get something repaired on it, you know? And that would probably save the county money, I think, in the long run because they wouldn't have to work on it every year, you know? And it gets to be a big pain for them, I'm sure. But anyhow, that's what I'm here to ask for.
All right. Thank you so much for your comments.
Hey, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ray. All right, next person is Mr. John Fury.
Mr. Martin, other supervisors, thank you for allowing me once again to be here to speak. I made a presentation two weeks ago roughly on the River Edge Park Vista project. My key points were the apparent lack of proper planning and study before you made a decision to condemn and possibly take property of private citizens by eminent domain. This evening, I want to start by reminding you of your published mission statement that says that the board will function through transparent and physically responsible leadership. Your value statement says that the values is for a safe, secure community respectful of the Constitution. Value number six is transparent, responsive, participatory government. I will emphasize, add emphasis to participatory. Value number seven reemphasizes physical responsibility. And the last point in your goal statement is to increase citizen engagement. Gentlemen, I have seen no evidence of transparent, responsive, participatory government or any financial responsibility in your decisions regarding the River Edge Park Vista project to date. Your public website is absolutely devoid of any timely, meaningful information that was used by this group to lead to your resolution that it would be acceptable to condemn private property and to disrupt an entire community. The publicly available minutes of February 15th Board meeting do not present anything resembling an engineering or geotechnical study or the results of it or even a summary, nothing resembling an economic analysis, any kind of alternative drawings of the project that you surely must have reviewed before you passed this resolution. I don't think this board flies in the dark. I hope not anyway. The resolution itself was extremely vague regarding the purpose of the project. It's a multimillion dollar project and it was covered under the blanket statement of The project plans seem to somehow or the other also be adequate, sufficiently adequate for you to make a decision. A decision that disrupts people's lives. May or may not technically be in the process of eminent domain and condemnation and so forth, but when those letters came out, people's lives change. The real estate values change. The ability to sell and to buy real estate in that area is altered. Maybe not on paper, but it's altered. And I'm speaking from 37 years of altering people's lives with such determinations. The best information available to the public regarding the recreation expansion was a vague drawing showing elevators, trails, and stairways, a large restaurant and two zip lines down over the James River to Lynchburg. I'll now summarize what I have presented before. There's no evidence of any cost benefit analysis or any kind of net benefit analysis, nothing that was considered in the documents present or available to the public regarding the costs of direct or indirect impacts of this project. There's no evidence presented specifying the primary purpose or purposes of this project. Recreation is pretty doggone vague. What's the need for this project? There's no evidence in the public record that the board was presented with any of the basic engineering or geotechnical information on a very complex engineering component of this project. I'm not a geologist, I only minored in geology. But you go to the bottom of that cliff where you folks are looking at, you have a very unstable geological situation there that when you start putting the extremely stressful structures on top of that cliff you're going to need, it's going to be difficult and expensive. And nobody has put forward any kind of even a good guesstimate as to what these numbers will be. There's no evidence or consideration of coordination of the permits and so forth that may be required to cross the railroad on the Lynchburg side. You will be getting very low as you come down on the Lynchburg side with that wire and it's going to be very close to where the railroad's at. And I can assure you from, again, from years of experience, the railroads are very picky and very touchy about people that come close to their rights of way. What about the public utilities that will be on the same side? Has there been any coordination? Who have you talked to? No indication that there's been any coordination whatsoever on the Lynchburg side with any one of, any kind of authority. There's no evidence that the decades-old water and sewer system reading from down below up to the lane road, the lane street area can handle the added load of a restaurant the size that is portrayed on that drawing. What are you going to have to do to enhance or upgrade those systems if it's necessary? There's no evidence that anyone's even considered this. How many more relocations and possible eminent domain condemnations are going to be required to make this change? Same thing with the extra traffic. Was there any evidence whatsoever presented of an analysis of what this project is going to add to those streets and roads? Are you going to be able whatsoever to put it on that street that's existing or are you going to have to widen it? Safety, on the 1st of March was a key, key emphasized point on this whole thing. There's no consideration of the cost of these widenings. What about the zoning? The area that has been outlined for condemnation is in an area that is zoned residential. You're going to put a large restaurant and a park up there without any consideration of the zoning or any evidence of how you plan to go about going through the process to change the zoning?
Mr. Fury.
Sir.
We typically limit comments to three minutes and you've gone way over that, so I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, okay?
All right. Bottom line is, you've not presented evidence of any kind of study. Somehow or the other, by a wave of a hand, you have passed a resolution. I would strongly suggest that you get the public involved. You do not have a public involvement program out there. People standing here in front of you folks making comments week after week, meeting after meeting is not public participation. Someone needs to go into that community, explain to them what's going on, get their ideas, get their specific input. Maybe they have some ideas, they're not dumb. So it's critical that you get the public involved, it's critical that you get this kind of information together and that you get it out someplace that John Q. Public can pull it up on the website and see it. Otherwise, we think it's a done deal and our efforts are useless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to address the board? All right, hearing is seeing none. We'll move on to public hearings. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on Virginia Public School Authority General Obligation Debt Financing. This will be Mr. Taylor from Davenport. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having me here this evening. You all may recall, we were here in December, we had been working with staff for a number of weeks leading up to the December meeting to analyze various different project levels for the school under certain scenarios and options for financing. The overall goal was to figure out, A, can it, can we do this debt? Is it affordable? Is within our policies? The answer to that is yes. How can we make this affordable and B, relatively mitigate the impact to our overall budget? So if you would, turn with me, I think, we'll just jump to page 17 in the presentation. We had analyzed eight different scenarios, four of which were at the, call it $14 million level, the others were at the $19 million level. Since then, we've solidified that we want to be at the...
Do you want me to drive that?
Okay. So what we've analyzed for you in this update is the $19.6 million for the school project. Of course, that's including the addition of the land next to it as well as constructing the parking lot. So each of these three scenarios looks at the $19.6 million and using certain level of your reserves, mostly ARPA funding, which is, which totals $6.6 million. The balance of that up to $8 million is $1.3 million, that's a school carry forward that the county will preserve and be using that strategically to shave the increased debt service. And all that is to say is that we want to make sure that we minimize the impact to the county's budget. So under scenario one, that's where we take the $19.6 million and offset it by the full pot of monies of $8 million. That leaves you with no strategic reserves to shave the debt service and it's done over 25 years, which is your typical timeframe to finance a school. The second scenario is where we use only the ARPA money, $6.6 million, and offset our borrowing by that amount and use strategically the $1.3 million of the carry forward. And then in the last scenario, scenario three, which I think aligns to the preferred approach, again, thinking to minimize the impact to the budget, we do the same as scenario two. We use the ARPA funds only to buy down the borrowing. We use the $1.35 million strategically to shave the debt service over the next few years until your natural decline in debt service steps in. And then also, we're capitalizing interest for the first couple of years during construction. And so at the bottom line here on line 16, the overall impact to the budget over the next several years for years 25 to 28, you wouldn't have an impact in '23 and '24 because of the capitalized interest. But in '25 and '28, your debt service would step up from its current levels at $3.8 million by about $100,000 in round numbers. Now, we're also still tracking that refunding. And if we're, if we're at current markets, we would project about $22,000 annually in savings to further offset that impact, which is down on line 19 of 72,000. So our understanding and working with county staff is that that is able to be folded into the budget without, with very minimal impact. The other thing I want to point out is that we're on lines 12 and 13, we wanted to be mindful of not pushing the debt out so far that we're paying on it forever. 25 years has been truncated to 20 years in scenario three and that helps us mitigate that interest expense. So you see on line 13, it's actually $200,000 less interest versus scenario one over the life of the loan. Okay, so your all-in interest expense on scenario three would be $5.3 million. And I'll pause there if anybody has any questions.
Board, no questions. Please continue.
Okay. So by virtue of, you have a resolution in front of you this evening. The funding vehicle that we're proposing to use is the Virginia Public School Authority Spring Pool, which we've helped the county submit the application with the schools. The schools acted upon their resolution earlier this year and VPSA requires you to hold a public hearing in order to issue the county's general obligation debt to fund the project. And they will price their bonds on or about April 22nd and then the monies would be available to you when they close May 17th. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the board obtaining financing from VPSA for the purpose of school improvements and refinancing old debt at a lower interest rate? Anyone that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing is seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, what's your pleasure?
I move that the board approve the resolution and execution of the bond sale agreement by the county administrator.
Very good. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick point. Legally, what you're required to do in a case such as this is to have a roll call vote. That's what's required in order to approve the issuance of the bond.
Okay. Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Thank you, sir.
Good enough?
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right, next item on the agenda is a special exception request by Mr. Grant Massey. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. This is a request by Grant Massey for two special exceptions in the A1 Limited Residential District. The purpose of these special exceptions are to allow for two short-term tourist rentals of two separate dwellings. The first dwelling is located at 503 Woodson Road. It's identified as taxman number 29A5F. And the second dwelling for short-term rental is 505 Woodson Road and that's taxman number 29A5. Both of these parcels of land have direct access to a state road, so we're not sharing access. That's certainly one thing that we're always concerned about and we look for. And throughout this process, through the Planning Commission process and up to this point, we've had no complaints from the public. So we would recommend that you approve it with the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission.
Okay. Mr. and Ms. Massey, did you want to add anything?
If there's any questions that you have.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the special exception request? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing is seeing none, public hearing is closed. Board, what's your pleasure?
Martin, I move that the board supervisor approve the request with conditions recommended by the Planning Commission.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Good luck with your project. See, the next item is a special exception request of Mr. David Cooper.
Yes, this is a similar request. This is by David Cooper, also a special exception in the Agricultural District. This is also to allow a short-term tourist rental of the dwelling. This property is located at 312 Montrose Road and it's identified as taxman number 106A32A. One concern that we had from the beginning of this process was that, as I mentioned earlier, easement, there is a, an easement that traverses through another property to get to this parcel. We were able to address that early on with Mr. Cooper. He provided staff with documentation to show that they have easement through the property for this dwelling and it happens to be family property that the easement's through. But, so, that has been concerned, so staff's happy with that and also with this, with this issue, we've had no complaints.
Good. Is Mr. Cooper present?
Yes.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the special exception request? Sam, are you speaking in favor? Oh, you're leaving. Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the special exception request? Hearing is seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board?
Mr. Martin, I move that the board supervisor approve the request with conditions recommended by the Planning Commission.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Okay, the next is a special exception request of Mr. Joseph Gerina.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think it's Gerina.
Gerina, I'm sorry.
This is a request by Joseph Gerina for a special exception request in the B2 Commercial District. This is to allow automotive repair garage, the use will include towing. This is at 128 Old Town Connector and taxman number 160A1-A6. These two buildings were previously used as automotive repair. There was a period of time where they were, they stopped being used for automotive repair. The last use was for towing, but they ceased the automotive repair portion of it. And in the B2 General Commercial District, automotive repair is a special exception use. So the reason it's back before you tonight is because enough time had elapsed that did not allow it to be, continue to be vested, so it's before you again tonight. And one of the things that the county has the opportunity to do is to include conditions as a, as a special exception request. And prior, prior to this approval, I was not able to find conditions that were tied to it. So generally, we've applied the conditions that we would normally apply for a automotive repair garage. A few things that are a little bit unique is the last tenant of the building removed what was a grass median, it had a split rail fence in it. Staff has been working with the applicant to revise a site plan that would, would take that really a 140-foot almost wide entrance, reduce it down to VDOT standards to a low-volume commercial entrance, which would be 40 feet, and add landscaping across the front. So we would add trees and shrubs across the front. I've been working with the applicant on that and we are on the same page in terms of the site plan. I won't go through all the conditions there in your packet, but I wanted to point that difference out in terms of the addition of meeting the full landscaping plan with this request. So any questions for staff at this time?
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the request?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Alan McCormick. My partner, Joseph Gerina, is at the hospital. He had some complications earlier today, so, but basically, we're, you know, we're moving into a vacant building and, you know, opening a business. Right now, we have 10 employees and we're generating last year $750,000, $800,000. And I mean, we're just getting started, so we're looking to bring some revenue into the county and maybe some more jobs opening up in the future and just build relationships with some of the places around. We've built a lot of relationships with other businesses in Forest. We were very successful there and, you know, looking just to carry that on out there here. And that's about it.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing is seeing none, public hearing is closed. Board members, I would like to recommend that we amend the conditions to state the landscaping will comply with the county's code and that the entrances will be revised to VDOT standards. If that's acceptable to you guys. All right. So I'll make that in form of a motion. Is there any discussion on that? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Thank you, sir. Good luck with your project. All right, next thing on the agenda is an ordinance relating to sign exemptions.
Yeah, so you heard of this for a first reading at your last meeting, but certain types of signs are required by both federal, state, and local law. Amherst County's ordering ordinance does not formally exempt... Amherst County's zoning ordinance does not formally exempt signs that are required by federal, state, and local law or other regulations. And this is a fairly simple change, and this proposed amendment would exempt those type signs. And so this change is found in the exempt portion of the sign ordinance.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment? All right, zoning. Anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing seeing none, public hearing is closed. Board?
I move that the board approve ordinance 2022-0001.
Very good. Any discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, Mr. Bryant, the next one is an ordinance on revoking of permits.
And so this regulation allows and puts, gives, I used the last example when I was here last on another tool in the toolbox for both the board, the Planning Commission, and staff to use when there are special exception permits that have not been properly exercised. And that could be based on use, that could be based on lack of conditions, and that could be a lack of follow-through of special exception requests that are approved. There's a number of things to be considered, and this process also allows and requires a public hearing process. So if you were, you as the board, if you were looking to revoke a special use permit, we specify in this ordinance the grounds for revoking, how to do that, the requirement to revoke by resolution, and then, of course, through the public hearing process. So any permit that would be considered to be revoked would be vetted through staff and would go through the normal public hearing process. Any questions for staff?
Board, any questions?
No, sir.
All right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing seeing none, public hearing is closed. Board?
Mr. Martin, I move that the board approve ordinance 2022-0002.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. All right, next thing, board, is the consent agenda, which involves amendments of February 15th, 2022, appropriation of revenue for the sheriff's office and revenue for the Amherst County Public Schools. Is there a motion?
Mr. Martin, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion approved. All right, next on our agenda is a presentation by, we're all glad to see you, Firefly, on the fiber build-out plan, Mr. Gary Wood. Please come forward and tell us when we're getting internet.
I will do that. I'm going to ask Melissa Gay, a native of Amherst and resident of Amherst, to join me a little bit. I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of where we are, what we've done, and then Melissa's going to tell you the exciting stuff about what we're getting ready to do. But we appreciate your support always. The partners in Amherst County, when we're building here, we're building on Appalachian Power. I say partnership loosely. It's partnership. We pay them, they make their poles ready, and then we pay them to use them, but we still depend on them to get that work done. And we've got a pretty good relationship with them as a sister utility. Amherst County is obviously the most important partner here, and the county has been very supportive throughout our projects to try to get things moving and been very supportive in the VADI application. And then the Thomas Jefferson Planning District is the single entity that actually applied for the VADI grant, because there has to be one, and we're a sub-applicant to them as well as the counties. So, let me see if I can figure out how to move this some, uh-oh, I'm playing with things here. Let's move it this way. In Amherst, we have already made some progress. The Gladstone Substation area, we have connected, and everybody who has an interest in service there is connected. The Colling Area Substation comes in just a little bit along Boxwood Farm Road. We have those folks connected. We have several CARES projects that the county partnered with us on, where we received funds from the coronavirus relief federal funds at Boxwood Farm Road, at Gladstone, and then at the Roses Mill, Ward Barn Road, and Flatwood Roads area. All of those are complete. A couple of those took longer than we expected because we ran into some rock issues. I don't know if you've ever had people hit rock in Amherst County when they dug. We knew there would be some. There was more than some, but we worked around that, both at Gladstone and in some areas of the Boxwood Farm Road. All of those folks now have service if they want it. So we have fiber, gigabit service in front of 650 locations. 352 people have signed up and are actually active. We've got 60 miles of fiber in the ground, and that's about $4.2 million in investment so far. This year, we'll talk about what we're going to do in just a minute, this is our entire big regional plan, so we're going to cover a lot of parts of central Virginia, but the more important piece right here in Amherst, the blue area is the central Virginia electric area and the CARES area. Okay? So that kind of eastern piece and northeastern piece are the Gladstone areas and the CARES areas. We didn't show every individual piece of this. A little bit of that area up around Temperance, kind of the Flatwoods Road and Ward Barn areas and that blue area to the west. Today, we closed on property at Temperance itself for us to put a hut there. We need a communications hut in that location to serve the rest of the central Virginia area that'll go up Long Mountain all the way to the Blue Ridge Parkway. We closed on that hut. We'll be back in front of you soon with permit requests, but we'll also have crews starting within the next probably few weeks to month, starting that Temperance build-out. Our intent is to get all of the central Virginia area built out by mid-year. That'll cover that northern blue area. Then the yellow areas are the Appalachian Power areas that'll be covered as part of the VADI grant. And we're going to end up splitting that between two different new huts. We're going to put one around Elon and one around Sweet Hills, across the tracks and the 29 from Sweetbrier. And from there, we'll build out, we'll build one section at a time. This is a three-year total project across that whole big region. We're going to build some here earlier, some will take a little longer, and I'm going to let Melissa touch on a few of those in just a minute. Here's the big picture of what the project looks like in Amherst County. From the VADI area, there's two different funding sources. This probably adds more confusion than it needs to, but the VADI project brings in funding from the state VADI program and the county. Our Connect America Fund Award that we'd received earlier from the FCC helps fund another piece of that. It all kind of intertwines, so we end up with a total of a $28.5 million project in Amherst County. VADI's given us $7 million. The county is funding $3 million. You can see that leaves us about $18 million in funding that Firefly is putting up. All total will be past just under 5,200 homes. I will tell you, we'll actually be in front of more than that, because this just counts the areas that are qualified for VADI funding, which means if we build down, one side of a road is qualified for funding, if we build on a power line on the road, we're going to offer service on both sides. One side will be able to receive reimbursement for, the other side we want, but that's not a big deal. So it's 5,200 in the qualified area. We'll probably be somewhere around 5,500, 6,000 total accounts that we'll have service available to. There are 1,019 electric counts in the county, and we'll end up with 526 total miles of fiber. To give you a picture, the total VADI award across all 13 counties was $79 million, so $7 million is in Amherst County. So it's a significant piece of the overall project. And this is where I'm going to turn it over to Melissa to tell you what we're actually doing, because she's our communications manager and knows what's going on.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. I'm Melissa Gay, as already introduced. Drum roll, please, what everybody wants to know. Where are we going next? So Gary alluded to us building out the CBEC piece of this build, so we'll be in Temperance and we'll finish out that build by the middle of the year and work on those final connections through the year end. So that's about 900 pieces. You saw that in the blue piece of the map that was in the northeastern part of the map on our previous slide. So next up, Little Piney area in Indian Creek, north of the Buffalo River. We're going to include Winton, Heartless Road, Gaddys Mountain, Toy Town, and this will be after the CBEC piece. So we will put our hut in that area so that we can serve through there. That's connecting in the winter and spring of 2023. And that's 700 more passings in Amherst County. Additionally, we will build from Temperance to Elon. Woo, go Elon. My daughter's in school there. And that will come all the way down from the Parkway, 130, Madison Heights, and over to Stapleton. So we did talk about the three huts, the new hut. Great news about closing on the Temperance Hut today, so we'll have the addition of that one, our hut at Sweet Hills, as he's already talked about, just across from Sweetbrier, and then our Elon Hut. So we'll have a hut there that will serve those areas. And we're looking at through the fall of 2023 for the completion of those areas. And then, just as a reminder, sometimes it's difficult to understand what takes us so long if we're standing here today and we're talking about fall of 2023 and even 2024 as we look at a three to, a two-to-three-year plan for this. We look at six months from the start of construction, but to get to the start of construction, there are many, many phases. And you'll see here, the first thing that we do is we send the crews out to do the data collection, so they're literally on foot. They drive pole-to-pole. For Appalachian Power, we need to be sure that the pole is where they tell us that it is. Just because we design it doesn't mean that when we get there that the pole is actually in that space. So they drive from pole-to-pole through the entire area to do that collection, which will inform the design. From there, our engineers can design how the fiber will roll to be certain that we can follow our infrastructure overhead or underground. So if your power is overhead, it will follow the lines, and if it's underground, in most cases. In some areas, we need to have a workaround and take a different route. In those instances, our engineers would get involved to help us figure that out. After those plans are approved, then it's boots on the ground. That's when we send in the crews, and they're going to start our make-ready construction, which means that any poles that need to be changed out, any of our transformers that need to be moved, and additional guide wires put in for support, all of the literal make-ready work to hold the steel fiber that will go up on those poles. It's very, very strong. We've got to make sure those poles can withstand that tension along with our electric lines. Then the fiber construction comes in. They put the steel strand in, they lash the fiber around the strand. I don't know if any of you are on Facebook, but Firefly's been posting some video of the task of lashing the fiber to the steel. And it is not a fast process, but it's intriguing to watch. And finally, our splicers will come out. They will pull that fiber down. It's almost like a sci-fi movie for me. They'll pull the fiber out and they will splice it into a box, and the fiber's encased in those little tubes. It's almost like hairs, like something that I would pick up off the carpet and toss into the trash if I saw it, the tiniest fibers. They splice those around in our connection boxes at the road, and then we do the fiber to the home, which, of course, is why we have the increased reliability with Firefly Fiber, meaning that it's to the home, it's not satellite, it's not fixed wireless, it's wired straight into your home through your wall so that you're not experiencing slowdowns or disturbances from weather or any other thing that would impact your reliability and speed. And then, after we've done all of those pieces, you, our customers, our Amherst residents, will get the call that it's time to schedule their installation, and we'll have a tech come in into the home and perform the installation at that time. Then all of our wonderful schoolchildren can work remotely on snow days, on Long Mountain, and in any other circumstances, and this much-needed internet will finally arrive in my home county. Oh, there's probably more slides.
Thank you.
So this is, I think you all know about our pricing. I leave it here just so that it is on record that we offer 100 megabits per second for $4,999, 1 gigabit per second for $7,999, which is an unprecedented speed in these areas and what you would consider the norm in our more urban areas. So it's amazing that we'll be able to have this here in every area, top of the mountain or down in the valley. And we do offer the best equipment available, and that is free, free installs, no gimmicks, no introductory prices, and no contracts.
Very good. Well, thank you, Ms. Gay. I do have a question for you.
Certainly.
If I go home and I don't get an answer, my son will kill me. So Clifford area?
Yes.
Tuscaloosa, Fletcher's level between 151 and 29.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm reading this correctly, that's winter to spring, winter of this year to spring of 2023?
That's, yes, that'll be built in our Sweet Hills build, so we'll be looking...
No, no, this is before, Sweet Hills is further down. We don't show Sweet Hills yet.
Oh.
This is going to be fed off of the, a combination of the lines at Boxwood Farm Road and off of the other CARES build, that area along 151, kind of from the Nelson County line down to 29 and to the east. So, yeah, that'll be built, though, be built late this summer. The connections, final connections, will come in by late, start late this year and be finished up by next spring.
So just for our citizens that might be watching, those that are with us this evening, could you go to the map and just kind of give a general timeframe for each area?
Yes, and I will tell you, we will actually have more accurate and specific maps up on our website. We're developing the maps, and when we put them up, we need to be accurate, because if you show a person in the wrong place, it can make them unhappy that they're not getting it and they should be getting it, or that we show them that they're getting it and then they turn out not, which is really bad. So if I have my mouse here, we're talking about the area starting along this blue area that's already got service and running down to the eastern side of the Buffalo River, which covers Winton, Clifford, Gaddys Mountain, Heartless Road, that area down to Toy Town Road across 29. We'll be getting service out of that build this summer when we're building it, into fall when we're doing the splicing, and we'll be making connections by winter and finish them up by next spring. I used to just put when connections started, and then I found that people would get upset because it takes a while to finish them all, so we're trying to give the full window here. But you'll see activity there starting in the next couple of months with make-ready construction. Then the fiber crews will be in in late summer, the splicers by the fall, and the connections will come in in winter. All right?
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bryant?
The areas that are not colored, down in Madison Heights and the town of Amherst?
Right.
That's all currently served, for the most part, by Comcast. Now, my question is, I know your priority is to spend your grant money and cover the areas that you promised to cover. I'm hoping that you have intentions to work your way into those areas too and provide Comcast some competition. Is that in a plan somewhere? Or not yet?
Am I on TV? I know, so I realize that. So, yes, the first goal of Firefly is to make sure everyone without any option has service, and that is what we will do. We're going to focus on that and build that. After that is over, and when we get to 2024, early 2025, and all of this VADI work is complete, which is a huge project, then we will make decisions on where to expand beyond that, where the economics work. And the economics work in areas with a little more density. Sometimes they have cable service, and if we feel we can be competitive, we'll certainly go in there and provide an option for people. So we'll make that decision, though, based on what the reaction is to our service, what the sound... the salaries are, all of those things. I would anticipate that there's a good chance that we'll look to continue to grow in areas that are adjacent to the areas we're in. We're not looking to move to other parts of the state. We don't want to be a big regional company, but we want to build service where people want it.
Our challenge, of course, is that Comcast does not serve everyone in their areas. They leave entire streets and neighborhoods off of their grid.
Right.
You'd like them to get them serviced.
So the intent of the map as we show it, and you'll, I don't know, there's not a way for me to blow this up easily. Maybe there is. I see, actually, I can, let's see. If you look down here in the areas around Madison Heights, there is a hodgepodge of areas we serve and areas we miss. We tried to pick up every individual location that could be identified that did not have the option of Comcast service. So there are some ends of streets and little neighborhoods that are in this project. If there are other areas like that we identify, we'll be glad to look at them. Because when we build, when we build up 130, we've got to build up the main line of 130 to get to these areas. So we're going to be in some Comcast areas by the nature of the design of following power lines. And we'll certainly look at other opportunities where there's interest in service in future years. But we've got a lot to do the next few years. And we realize that people need it today. We're going to move as fast as we can and get services as quickly as possible to the highest number we can. We're going to get this area built in this year along with the Little Piney and Indian Creek areas up here. We're going to build over into this area with Elon, and it will go, Elon covers all the way down into this corner in the southern county out of that Elon Hut. Then this piece will be the future piece out of Sweet Hills. It'll be built probably in late '23 or '24, but we'll be back to you with that date once it's settled a little further and we get a little further down. We hate to give dates too far in advance because so many things can change, and we don't want people making decisions based on a date we give them when it's unclear at that time. All right?
The Allwood Pleasant View area, over in that area, is that part of anything that you have?
Allwood Pleasant View is part of that Elon. So there's a couple of areas. As we come away from Route 60 going up Long Mountain, we will be picking up those areas. Some of it will be built with the Elon area, some of it will go back and pick up out of our central Virginia Temperance area. We will be building that, and I'll get the actual date up to you, but it's included in that, yes.
Okay.
I don't know whether it'll be part of the Elon build or whether it'll be coming out of a extension of that Temperance build.
And many Allwoods residents already C V C numbers, my family. I got none.
What if, how long of a driveway will you go up, a residential driveway for a connection?
So for the VADI project, we will go 2,500 feet off the main line, which is a half a mile. If you're low or moderate income, we will go as far as we need to get to your house without charge. If you are over a half a mile and you can afford it, we'll be charging you the cost of putting the fiber in, which runs about a dollar a foot after that, after the first 2,500 feet.
Okay.
All right?
Mr. Wade?
A question from Mr. Rogers. For the areas that are not covered by Comcast, can you, and you might have already provided this information to Firefly, but could you ensure that they have those locations just to make sure they're covered?
Yes, sir, they do have that information. My question was for the benefit of the public, I guess. Thank you.
And we were able to confirm a lot of that information by way of the survey.
Okay.
That we sent out to all of the counties. Our county partners encouraged the residents to send us speed tests from their homes, and we do have those logged, their speed tests with their addresses. So when the VADI areas were built, we were able to incorporate those self-reported speed tests, or lack thereof. Some of them couldn't even perform a speed test.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, I will say thank you. You know, you've been here a couple of times. You've done what you said you were going to do as a true private partner, private-public partnership, and we appreciate what you're doing for our county.
Thank you, and I think you'll hear a lot more about Melissa as we get the maps firmed up, because that really helps you see exactly where we'll be on these dates. So when you question about where around Clifford we are, you can see your homes on that. And you'll be able to go on our website and drill down by home, and it'll tell you services available or it's coming soon. We try to announce 12 to 18 months of construction in advance. Beyond that, it gets a little hairy as to whether we can hit the schedule, so we do 12 to 18 months at a time.
I'll give my 17-year-old your number, and that'll be all right.
All right.
Thank you all.
Melissa, listen, Ego's links to Joy and Ego's, or P I O.
Okay.
She can put them out.
Sure, be happy to. And we are building out our website with an Amherst County page. So as this map goes on and we get it updated, I'll be certain to pass that along.
And let me close with a thank you to the staff. Jeremy and Dean have done a great job every time we've asked for things. I was hoping to find our school superintendent tonight, who I understand is retiring. He's my favorite school superintendent because he's been great to work with and has been really helpful. But Amherst County is one of our favorite partners, and we're looking forward to doing a lot more than we have been already here. We've got a lot of work to do, and hopefully we'll see you more regularly.
Thank you all very much.
We've got some questions here.
All right, this was a, just a presentation to the board. You know, maybe if you want to meet him out in the hall, he'll be happy to answer a question for you, okay? All right, next item on the agenda is a presentation by Captain Reynolds and Mr. Tony Serqua concerning the animal shelter operations.
I'll be brief. I've given the Humane Society more time. One of the difficult jobs that we have is we have to make decisions to best utilize the, utilize the resources that the county gives us. What we try to do at the animal shelters is try to maintain compliance. We have animals being brought in that, in a lot of cases, are strays, and we have to balance between the health of the animals and animals that are adoptable. So what that does is it puts us in an unfortunate position of making tough decisions. I won't go into a lot of detail, but a lot of times that does involve euthanases. And our responsibility in my, based on the directive that I've been given by the sheriff is to provide the healthiest animals that we can provide to the Humane Society so they can adopt them out. I try not to, I try to make decisions that are made according to the information I have. I depend on subject matter experts to give me that information, including Laurel Stone Vet. When they tell me an animal needs to put down and their potential risk to other animals, unfortunately, that puts us in a position to make that decision. I applaud our animal control officers. They have a tough job because they have to, they have to see the animal all the way through. I feel really bad from my standpoint. I've got to give them the directive, but they have to carry out what I say. So like I said, we're doing what we can to assess the animals, provide them veterinary services, and provide an animal to the Humane Society as quickly as possible. That includes photographing the animal, checking them to make sure they have any type of, the identification tags in their ears, whether they've been in other shelters before, have been adopted out. And like I said, we try to give the healthiest animal that we can to the animal, the Humane Society, and then they handle how they're adopted out. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm going to let the Humane Society talk about their side of it. Yes, sir.
Now, I'm asking if they have any questions?
None right now, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I do have one question for you. So you mentioned that basically you're dealing with the resources that the county makes available to you.
I mean. We just don't, we don't, it's almost like we can't overbook it.
Do you need more resources?
I don't think it's a resource, it's a spacing issue. It is, we can't, we are not expecting you to fund more. If we have other resources and feel like we can adopt more animals out or get healthier animals, that's something that you can do funding-wise for the Humane Society. Our, we all have been really gracious to us to bring vets in. Laurel Stone has been over to our facility during that period of time where we had a Colisi outbreak, they were over there at least once or twice a week. And they are telling us this animal, you know, this is a treatment plan. The Humane Society was good enough to give us like different type of treatment options for the animals where they, where we gave them the best chance to survive. Unfortunately, like I said, the issue is with a confined area like that, is it, the best way to look at it like this is if you have an animal that's out in an environment and they come into your environment, it's an enclosed environment, it's like anything else. If you pack a whole lot of people into an environment, they're bringing all the different things that they have. That's why I hate hospitals. I know they're supposed to be germ-free, but the worst thing to do for me is like, I don't like being in hospitals because that's where all the sick people come. Unfortunately for us, most of the animals that we get in are not animals that you would think. If they are, they go out the door really quick. The other ones are animals that have been running wild for a period of time and things like that, and we have to make decisions based on that so we can put animals out that are more adoptable.
Thank you. Mr. Serqua? Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
I was a coach.
All right, our side is a little more complicated. I'm going to try and keep it at a high level so I can get through it real quickly. I want to start out, because it comes up in conversations, the building situation. We've been in the same building with County Animal Control for 46 years. The first 36 years of the 46, we were Animal Control, basically. The county, since 1976 to 2008, contracted us to run the entire facility. Anything we didn't control, we had one Animal Control Officer who at that time was a civilian, and they basically brought in animals to us. But we took care of the animals from the county side as well as the adoption side. So we're in the same building for a reason. It benefits the animals greatly, and it benefits the county greatly too, which I'll kind of touch on that later on as we go down the process. The building as it's structured, two-thirds of the building belongs to the county, one-third belongs to us. We pay mortgage based on the square footage percentage. We pay the electric, all the utilities based on the square footage percentage. Our third of the building is strictly nonprofit. We don't get a nickel, never have, from the county or the federal government or anybody. Strictly fueled by donations, as well as our store, which we operate a thrift store. That's a great source of funding for us. So we're completely self-funded. No board members are paid. No board members are compensated for personal expenses. Another point that comes up, since we're going through it for the record, we have no affiliation with any national group with the name, with the words "Humane Society" in it. Our name is Humane Society, it's a generic term. We're not affiliated with the Humane Society of the United States or any other name. We are standalone single unit, have been since the early '70s. So that's where we're at. The, getting down to the process, there's basically two ways a dog comes in, vast majority of them. You have the stray, which can come in from an Animal Control Officer, or it could be brought in by a citizen, that's a stray dog. The other is an owner surrender, where an owner says, "I can't take care of this dog anymore, please take it." Starting with the stray side, of course, as Jewett pointed out, they're checked for chips, and if they have a collar on or any ID, obviously, that's the first thing we do. After they're checked for that, any obvious injuries, Animal Control or the staff there will take them to a veterinarian. State law obligates the county to have them looked at, so they are looked at. They do have budgetary constraints in that regard. So if the animal needs more than just a patch-up and a few x-rays, Animal Control contacts us, and we talk to the vet, we get the situation, and vast majority of times, we approve and we will pay whatever additional funding is necessary. If anybody here has pets, you know a thousand bucks like that. So we will pay $1,000, $2,000 to recuperate an animal, to adopt them out for $125, but that's what we're here for. So we try to save as many as we can. The animals are immediately posted on a Lost Animals in Amherst County page on Facebook. This is jointly run with Animal Control and us. We have no obligation, no state law requires us to advertise these animals that are picked up. We do it because we want to reunite them with their families, and some people just, they take days or weeks to call us and say, "Hey, my dog's been gone for a few weeks. You seen him?" So we post them on Facebook, and that gets a lot of attention, and that helps them find their way home, if that's possible. The, when the animals come in, talking about the benefits of the single building, when the animals come in, our staff meets them immediately. They're in there, they're assessing their temperament, assessing their mental state and their physical state. The Animal Control will take them to the vet if they're bleeding, but if they got mats of hair covering their eyes, or if they got ticks on them or anything else, Animal Control's not obligated to do that. So we take care of that. And if it involves a vet, we have a vet comes in once a week, or it's something we can do, we'll take them to our side, give them a bath, groom them, clean them up, and we're preparing them for adoption. Now, some of these animals are still on hold, as you, most of you probably know, think if it comes in with a collar, it has to be held for five days, without a collar, three days. So we have to hold them to give owners a chance to come and claim them. We don't wait for the owners to come to claim them to give the dogs attention. We want to be prepared. When that hold is up, they hit Facebook, they go up for adoption. As I said, Humane Society, we've been running this one building for years. We don't differentiate where the dog is sitting. We don't care if he's sitting in a kennel 10 feet across the separator or if he's in our kennel. Our goal is to get all dogs adopted, as many dogs as we can get adopted. Out of Animal Control, that dog is not coming to our side, so that's a good thing. It's a good thing for everybody. So we pay attention to the animals. The minute their hold is up, they then become available, adoptable animals. By that time, they've been bathed, they've been cleaned, we've already assessed their temperament, we already know their likes and dislikes. Some like cats, some don't like dogs. Then their pictures are taken, we have a volunteer who's very good, takes beautiful pictures of them, and they hit Facebook and Pet Finder immediately. So, but the process starts well before the time comes. Now, some people pick up their dogs and they get a free grooming, some dogs get free medical attention, free shots. Some of the owners donate to us to compensate us, some don't. We don't care. We take care of the animal, we send them off better than they came in, and that's the main thing we want to do. I'm kind of going down the dog line now. The cats, cats are a different thing. But in the case of dogs, and maybe we don't advertise ourselves enough, maybe we don't toot our own horns, we're so busy saving animals, we don't speak of it. But a lot of people probably don't realize, from a standpoint of dogs, we are no-kill. No adoptable dog gets euthanized in Amherst County, period. Out of 500 dogs that came through the shelter through Animal Control last year, seven were euthanized. Three were bitten by a rabid animal, and they had no shots, and the Health Department ordered Animal Control to put them down. Two were aggressive, very aggressive, and two had cancer. So that's it. We've had dogs on our side for up to two years to get them adopted. So again, dogs are no-kill, no dog gets put down that's adoptable in Amherst County as a whole. That's a pretty good record for a county that generates a lot of homeless animals. So on the cat side, they're a different story. We get many more of those, 700 cats came through our building last year. They, they're more, they're subject to more diseases, they typically come in more diseased than the dogs do. The diseases are contagious. It gets away from them sometimes, say them, I was going to say us, because that's the way we talk. It gets away from us sometimes where the disease is spread and we have to contain them. But the cats are a difficult situation because of that. So many of them come in sick, and a large number of them are completely feral. They're wild animals. You can't adopt them out. So we euthanize a lot of cats, but there's an awful lot of them that can't leave the building, that the building, they're, they're not safe, and they're also very sick. Uh, so, we do what we can, the ones that, uh, you know, we try to separate ones that are skittish from feral. If a cat's just afraid of you, we work with them. Both Animal Control and our staff will work with the cats to see what their demeanor is. When a cat wants to kill you, you know, that's, that's pretty much the end of that. Uh, now, we do place some of those, I think last year we placed maybe twenty, twenty-five cats in barns. People that come in saying, "I got barn, I'd like to have a few cats, kill some mice," they'll take the feral cats. Uh, but, you know, aside from that, they're a challenge for us, and, uh, uh, some, there are some adoptable cats in Amherst County that get euthanized, but every year we get better and better at lessening that number. Um, the, uh, some, some, uh, comments are made sometimes about rescues, which do we, why don't we work with outside rescues? And that's, it's actually kind of comical to us because that's, our lifeblood is outside rescues. Uh, some of you may or may not know, uh, we have rescues all, I won't say down, it's all up the east coast, up in the northeast, Pennsylvania and New Jersey. Uh, we have a number of relationships, have for years, with those rescues. Uh, we fundraised and bought a forty thousand dollar van, so, and that van, the purpose is to carry dogs and cats to the northeast. Uh, we say as an example, last year we adopted out a hundred and twenty dogs out of the Amherst Shelter, and we transferred a hundred and sixty-two. And it's typical, year to year, we transfer more dogs to rescues than we actually are able to adopt out. And, uh, so if anybody has any questions while we use rescues, I don't even know what to answer them. I mean, it's a big part of what we do. We are literally in communication with other rescues every day. Uh, as dogs come in, we're sending pictures, "Hey, you guys like poodles?" You know, "We got a couple of poodles in, what do you think?" And they'll be, "Yeah, yeah, send them up, send them up." So, that's our life, is, is carrying them up there. Uh, we also try, we lose money on every animal that leaves the building, every single animal. Question is how much? In best-case scenario, with a healthy animal, we lose fifty, seventy-five bucks. Uh, some animals, we lose two thousand dollars, but, uh, that's what we're here for. Um, we, uh, cats, uh, right now, everybody knows prices are going up, anybody that's got a pet knows what it costs to go to the vet. It costs us over a hundred dollars to vet a healthy cat. That's a hundred, a hundred bucks or more to give them shots, get them fixed, and we test them for every known disease. So, when a cat goes home to a Amherst County resident or whoever, it doesn't have any of the diseases that people worry about. It's clean. Uh, we charge forty dollars a cat to adopt them out. So, we lose at least sixty dollars. If they need, if they have ear mites or anything else, you can add another fifty bucks. So, we're losing a lot of money in an effort because even though there's inflation out there, if we raised cats to a hundred dollars, we, they'd never leave the building, they just wouldn't. It's Amherst County, you put a can of tuna out, you have a cat. So, uh, our hope is to attract them to, "Hey, for forty bucks, you get a healthy, ready-to-go cat with no disease." So, even though we're paying higher and higher prices, we're not raising our adoption rates. We will eat it. We're very fortunate, we have, uh, we have generous benefactors, the thrift store does well, we can afford it. So, uh, as a business plan, no bank would get near us because we spend money really fast, but, but we're covered and we're, and we're good to do that. So, um, um, the other, let me see, I think I had one more item. Before, I, I mentioned the cats being adopted. I think that's kind of the real basic run of it. I don't know if you have any questions or not, but...
I have none. I have a few. So, uh, talk to me about spay and neuter clinics. Is there enough of them in the county?
No.
Can we do more? How can we do more?
Well, that's a good question. Um, we used to get a lot of support from veterinary offices, and as of right now, we had, there are no veterinary offices in Amherst County that help us. None. Uh, part of it, I think, and you'd have to ask them because we don't know, part of it was triggered because Amherst Vet, who was one of the biggest in the county, they had like four vets there. They had their share of internal problems, a couple of them got arrested, whatever, it's not my business. They sort of collapsed, and all of their clients just went to the other vets. So, suddenly, Amherst Vet, who helped us for, I don't know how many years, thirty years they've been helping us, they said, "We can't help you anymore, we're barely keeping our doors open." So, we said, "Fine." So, our, our theory is all these clients went to the other vets and they got inundated, and one by one, they started stopping, helping us. So, uh, we get know-how from Amherst County vets, and it's very disappointing to us that that's the case.
So, the animals you adopt out, are they being spayed and neutered?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, we get a lot of help from Diamond Hills, a Lynchburg vet, uh, Sid Sterosum, who's supposed to be semi-retired, he's our lifeblood. He, he, he comes out to the shelter all the time and helps us, and we, we don't pay him much, and he does it. So, uh, a lot of Sundays, what's happening now is when Diamond Hill is closed on a Sunday, uh, we'll shuttle animals and he'll volunteer his time, and he'll fix them. Maybe seven, eight animals, they'll get fixed there. And, um, uh, we'll, we'll pay him something, and then we pay something to the, you know, for the use of the equipment and the anesthesia and everything else. And that's how we're surviving, and it's a big challenge for us right now, and we, we do, we can still send some animals to the spay-neuter clinic in Ebbingden, but unfortunately, that used to be an independent clinic, and they were a, a big help to all the shelters, but they're not, they're not independent now, so...
So, so Board, I, I guess what I would like is, um, Mr. Rogers, I don't know if you could work with, uh, Captain Reynolds and the Humane Society to see, you know, is there any way that we could increase spay and neutering in the county? You know, how can we do that? All right? Because obviously, that's an issue. I think one of the things you said was, um, basically, you talked about, there's a lot of animals in, in the county, right?
Uh-huh.
And a lot of feral cats, a lot of, all that. So, you know, maybe there's another answer for at least a, a help for reducing the population, right?
Well, every bit helps, obviously, I, clearly, if I didn't make it clear, no animal leaves our facility that's not...
I get that. Um, uh, maybe if we reduce the amount to get to, and we appreciate what you guys are doing, we do, uh, but if...
But we have, a, a lot of it's, I think, it's just, there's different mentalities in the county. Uh, we have people that every spring bring us a litter of puppies and say, "Here." And we say to them, "How about this? We'll come to your house, we'll, we'll come to your house, we'll pick the mom up, we'll take her and get her fixed, have her checked if she needs shots too, we won't charge you a thing, and we'll bring her back to your house the next day." Nope, not interested. And next, bring her back with a litter of puppies. And this happens, you know, with some frequency. So, a lot of people have different mentalities, they don't want their animals fixed. We don't have a program or we're going to start advertising, everybody bring their animals in to be fixed because that gets, well, first of all, as you know, we're struggling to get what we have adopted fixed, so we don't have the capacity by any stretch to do that. But, uh, we do help if people come in, low-income people, we will pay for a spay-neuter in a heartbeat for people that come in and say, "I gotta stop, my cat keeps having kittens, I don't know what to do." Leave them here, we'll take care of it. So, we're, we're happy to pay, and we do, we give free food to the community, cat food. We even have a couple places with disabled people that we deliver free food to them. Uh, so, uh, but yes, spay-neuter is a big issue in Amherst County, and we, you know, support is very thin right now for us. It used to be easy, we had several vets we used to work with, and we'd kind of move around and each one, but we, we literally have zero vets in the county of Amherst that do anything for us anymore. So, and that's a frustration.
Can I say something? We've had a lot of luck with Laurelstone, I'm not trying to advertise one, but they stepped up in a really big way, to the point where somebody's half...
Could you come to the mic of the public right here?
Sorry. Laurelstone Vet really stepped up for us. Um, what he described at Amherst Vet was an issue. We had a dog that was actually injured, injured and been hit by a car. Our Animal Control Officer actually took it to the vet, and they said, "We, we can't see you." So, Laurelstone was nice enough to give us protocols so we could photograph the animal and, you know, describe what it is and whether they needed immediate treatment, and they've always been there, you know, as far as us, as far as the vets. I, I, the spay and neuter is not, not for, for us, but as far as emergency-type situations, they've stepped up in a, in a big way, and it, it has been a huge help for us because they filled, like you said, that, that was a huge gap with Amherst Vet, um, because they were always really good to us, and it was just attrition over there.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is there, uh, can you quantify the number of spays and neuters you, you need in a year? Is it fairly steady?
Yeah. I, I, I don't have a number handy, but yet, it's, it's steady. And right now, we scramble for every one. Uh, it used to be...
But it's a, but it's a regular flow that you can quantify?
Yeah.
I'm thinking we put out an RFP and solicit bids and see what it would cost to get a quantity discount for a total number and have somebody on contract.
Right, yeah, we would love that, but we've, we've solicited all the vets asking for help. And I always, well, we'll get back to you, we're very busy right now, and I don't know. I mean, obviously...
But I mean, if we, if we could guarantee them this much business, we could guarantee such a price, and then you, then now you know what to budget for.
At least you know.
You know what to fundraise for.
Yeah, I, I think that's kind of what I was getting at, Mr. Rogers, if, if you guys could work together, maybe bring some kind of proposal.
Yeah, I'd be glad, I mean, the spay-neuter is more us than them, because that's just something we do, but I'd be happy to sit with you. Okay? I'll get your numbers.
Do you have anything? The, the only other thing, and I, I don't think we discussed it, is with the, the cats, and this has been an educational experience for me, there is, there is a triple test that you can give a cat when they come in, and if they have any of those diseases, underlying diseases, they can appear completely healthy when you send them out the door, but there's a trigger that sends them back in, and they are not really good candidates, if I understand that correctly.
That's correct.
Without a lot of treatment. So, that's another thing to look at. I mean, it's unfortunate, but once they get those diseases, it's, it, it would almost be letting people know, yes, you can adopt this animal, but this is an underlying condition. It's almost, uh, that's, that's the only thing that has come up a lot on these cats, is if you get that triple test on the front end of it, a lot of these cats, you don't want to put them in your population because they're going to make the rest of your population sick. Now, is there ways to go around that? Yes. But like I said, unfortunately for us, is we get one sick cat in there, we're at capacity or greater than capacity, then it just runs through the whole facility. Understood. Board, any other questions?
None, Mr. Tom.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Yeah, do that. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
All right, moving on to, uh, new business, Mr. Bryant, the redistricting committee.
Um, so, the Amherst Board adopted a redistricting committee with the adoption of a resolution twenty-twenty-one for our, uh, this committee comprised of two board members, Mr. Wade and Mr. Pugh, staff and a citizen from each of the electoral districts. Um, the Virginia Constitution requires local governments that elect their governing body members from, uh, districts to redistrict every ten years in response to the decennial census. We got a little behind this year because the census release is so slow, so most localities had to push back their, uh, redistricting committees to get solid numbers. Um, as you're aware of, the county elects, uh, members from five electoral districts, and therefore requires that, um, you might find that each district are currently structured to meet all applicable laws and requirements, and must redistrict, uh, through a redistricting ordinance. Equal population is one of the most fundamental elements, um, that's rooted in both the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of Virginia. Uh, generally, the redistricting committee works to ensure that each district was below ten percent deviation from each other. And so, what we found, and it's in your packet on the summary sheet, is that, uh, the twenty-twenty census results, we had a greater than ten percent deviation between District Four and District Five. Um, and so, the results, uh, revealed with that greater, uh, population deviation, um, that we needed to make some changes. So, the redistricting committee spent a fair amount of time, I'd like to give credit to Mrs. Gamble who's here tonight, and Mrs. Brown, um, who both spent their time on that committee. Um, I don't think there's anyone else here that was on that committee. If I'm missing anyone, I'm sorry. Um, also want to, uh, uh, call out, we had two youth representatives, Emma McFatter and Fatima Arami, who spent time coming up with a youth repres- a youth recommendation. We started with them first, and largely, their recommendation prevailed, and some of the things that we considered, and we spent a lot of time making sure and looking at boundaries in the recommendation that I'm going to present to you, is making sure that they make sense. Making sure they make sense from a geographical standpoint, making sure it makes sense from, you know, when you look at roads and, and those type of things. We didn't want to draw a line that was in the middle of, you know, the split and traverse property boundaries or, or geographic boundaries that just really didn't make good common sense. Um, the, the, the recommendation, um, from the redistricting committee is they came up with two different options, and I'll, I'll go over both those options with you. Um, one prevailed, um, as their unanimous recommendation. And so, what's before you on the map, uh, or on your screen, is a map that shows a recommendation to move four hundred and fifty-three citizens, um, from District Four to District Five. And that highlighted area that you see in front of you, um, shows that area between, starting at the Route twenty-nine, um, at Route twenty-nine and one-thirty intersection, uh, going down Route one-thirty connector to Amalon Road, follows Amalon Road all the way to Oakland Drive, uh, comes across, uh, this does come across some properties here, and then back up Boydland, Odens Bow Road, um, to Woody's Lake, and Woody's Lake back to Route twenty-nine business. So, generally, this area encompasses and covers, uh, and is really in between the two voting precincts, which is Amalon Elementary School. So, right now, uh, these folks that live in this highlighted area, uh, voted Amalon Elementary School, uh, they would be moved from Amalon to Manellison. Um, geographically, this area is almost kind of in between those two schools nicely. So, in terms of commute or disruptions to people, it's fairly minimal, considering you're about a couple minutes away, uh, any given place that you live in that area. Um, so, that was, uh, option number one, and that is actually the recommendation that, that the redistricting committee is going to, uh, is, is making to you. Uh, the second option, uh, is, let me pull it up, if you give me just a second. The second option, and the reason there was a second option was to spend a little more time in trying to get a bit more balance between the numbers. The second option would be, um, a, a change from the District Three to District Two. Um, that totals, um, let's see, the redistricting committee wrote to present both options to the board, um, yeah, I'm sorry. The amendment to this district would be amended, District Three would be six thousand two hundred and one, and District Two would be six thousand three hundred and sixty. Um, some challenges with making this move is that does require, uh, does, it does go across property boundaries, um, it, it's a fairly large move because these folks along, and this is North Five Forks, Father Judge, crossing property boundaries down Smokey Hollow, and this, this was a corner of the map between the, those, these, these two districts, in District Two and District Three. The, the challenge with moving these folks is, number one, we don't, we don't really need to for compliance, um, and it would move these folks all the way to vote in Amherst. So, it's a bit more disruptive. And so, our recommendation is that you do not choose the second option, um, but you choose the first option, which is what I presented to you initially. Um, so, the recommendation is that the board direct the county attorney to present Option One to the Virginia Attorney General's Office to review and certify with no objection the proposed redistricting boundaries as permitted by Section twenty-four point two, one-twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia. And so, uh, Mr. Popovich, if I understand this correctly, this would come back to the Board of Supervisors after work cleared, um, by the, by the, uh, Virginia Attorney General's Office.
Yes, that is correct. The, the legislation, the, the General Assembly adopted this legislation, um, in response to, um, the decision by the United States Supreme Court, um, with regards to the preclearance process under Section Two of the Voting Rights Act. Um, they deemed it to be unconstitutional the way it was written. Um, so, Virginia sought to maintain some level of preclearance process, uh, and so, the legislation, uh, that was adopted allows one of two tracks to be followed. One is a very public, uh, process, public hearings, public involvement, discussions, uh, many meetings, uh, and, and so forth, and then the other is a more streamlined version, which is you present your, your recommended change to the Attorney General's Office, who analyzes it for legal compliance, and then gives... compliance, and then gives you effectively a certificate of no objection, which allows you to proceed with setting a public hearing to revise your voting district boundary ordinance language.
Okay, so we'll still have a public hearing?
You will still end up having a public hearing, one way or the other, when it comes to changing the boundary.
And I believe we need to be done 60 days prior to the November election.
All changes must be done before 60 days, yes.
All right, Board, I know Mr. Pugh is not with us tonight, and that's the recommended option. You're District Five, correct?
I am, Mr. Sir.
Do you need this done tonight?
I think the hope was that we, we did get at least the authorization to ask for the, for the clearance from the Attorney General's Office, just because I'm not exactly sure how long they will take.
That is true.
Right, and, and the longer we wait, the longer we might get into a backlog at his office.
Board, what's your pleasure?
Let me, I'll make a motion. So I move that we direct county attorney to present Option One to the Virginia Attorney General's Office to review and certify with no objection the proposed redistricting boundaries as permitted by Section 24-2-129 of the Code of Virginia.
Okay, motion on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Thank you, Mr. Bryant and Mr. Popovich. Next thing on the agenda is the county's administrative report. I believe there are some vacancies with the agricultural committee.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. We have three open seats. Two individuals have expressed a desire, Craig Maddox and Lisa Powell, and we continue to search to fill that third seat.
Looks like we need a motion. I would make the motion that we go ahead and appoint, well, Mr. Craig Maddox and Ms. Lisa Powell to the agricultural committee.
And these are for two-year terms, because they've begun staggering their terms to reduce the burden on the, the knowledge base of the committee.
Okay. I believe, I'm sorry.
We would like their terms to end on December 31st of 2024.
From what I understand, they're both involved with that committee?
Yes, sir.
Aren't you on that committee, Mr. Ayers? I'm sorry, did you want to make that motion?
I can't. Need to back out.
Well, I withdraw my motion, and I'll let Mr. Ayers move.
Moved that the board want to appoint Craig Maddox and Lisa Powell as representatives to the agricultural committee for terms ending December 31, 2024.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Very good. All right, Liaisoning Committee reports, Parks and Recreation, that would be me, the Board, Parks and Rec Board met last night, as always, Mr. McDow, Dr. McNally, who is doing a great job in helping that board out. There's been a record registration with youth soccer, 333 youth have registered, registered this year. There's been a land, water and conservation fund grant applied for, which would be 50/50 matching grant that would give the county the ability to essentially double the investment if we received a grant with all funds that we've allocated. Upcoming events, March 26th is an outdoor expo at Isaac Walton Park, April 16th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. There'll be an Easter egg, Easter egg hunt for children at Papa Grove Golf Course. May 17th, senior luncheons start up again at Masson Heights Community Center, in partnership with the Sheriff's Office, and May 21st, there'll be an art show at the Monroe Community Center. You guys got any questions on the Parks and Rec Board? Cool, Blue Ridge Regional Jail Board of Directors meeting.
That's just there for information, those are the minutes from the meeting.
Well, I have a question on that. So it looks like the cost of medical and food is going up. Did we know if that's going to impact the county?
It likely will.
Okay.
Yes, sir, so we're waiting.
Waiting. Okay. Any questions, Board? Okay, next thing is a presentation from our Amherst County Museum Historical Society. That would be Ms. Starbuck and Ms. Ferris. Ms. Ferris was my second grade teacher.
She was telling me that.
And she looks the same now as she did.
Well-
Did you ever think I'd be sitting up here, Ms. Ferris? Probably so.
Mr. Rogers, Vice Chair Martin, and Supervisor Wade, thank you for letting us bring a report to you this evening. You just mentioned Judy. Judy Ferris is the President of our Board of Directors, and also with us is the, the past President Cynthia Hick, Cynthia, raise your hand, and our Vice President Midge Elliott. So they came out tonight. You know, it's been a wild ride over the last two years, counseling programs, postponing programs, rescheduling programs, but in 2020, and let's get back to two years, in 2020, we actually had four programs that we presented, two before COVID hit, and two in the fall when the, the numbers had dropped a little lower, we had two. You know, madam COVID has just been really playing havoc with us, but in 2020, we actually had 258 people attend programs, which wasn't bad for everything closing down in March of 2020. In 2021, we only had a ghost walk fundraiser, and that actually brought in 78 people, where the one in 2020 was 54 people. And we also had an open house in November of 2021 for the Monichan Nation, and what we were working on was an exhibit called the Monichan People, pre and post-contact eras. Our old exhibits just didn't have any spirit in it. It was difficult to understand, the timeline was all wrong, and so we had been working for about seven years to find, you know, a way of, you know, inspiring this new exhibit. And so finally, in November, when we asked the Monichan Tribe to come in and review it, they gave us a go-ahead on it. We had bright colors, we had powwow music, and it just turned into a really exciting, very professional-looking exhibit. Sunday, this past Sunday, we were open to the public for a presentation on the exhibit, but also honoring Dr. Karen Wood, a Monichan, who departed from us in July of 20, of 2019, actually. And she had been a motivating factor for us, and, and Mr. Rogers just happened to be at the museum when we first met with her back in 2018, and so we got his opinion, you know, also on which way we should go with the exhibit. So I hope you will have a chance to get by and see it. We pulled this exhibit into 2022, where we were collaborating with some other organizations to bring in the National Endowment of Humanities Big Read Program, which is currently going on. But back to 2021, I'd like you to turn to the statistics that I sent over to you, and if you want to turn to June, I wanted just to share some things with you. June is just a typical, I just picked it out of the air, but if you'll notice, we, we take statistics on a lot of different things. I want to know what's going on on the website, I want to know how many people are in the galleries or coming in, how many people are coming into research, I want to know where they're coming from, in Virginia as well as what other states. And you'll notice in the June one, we had Florida, Kentucky, Maryland, Ohio, and we're all still in this stage of protocols because of madam COVID. We are now open, we closed the museum library March of 2020, and we opened it back in June when things went down and we had our protocols in place. And then the library, we kept closed a little bit longer. That was March 2020 that we closed and did not open up until May of 2021. But we had lots of people calling or emailing, and you can look at the different email, how many came in about research, and so we were doing a lot of work for individuals, you know, long distance and by email and the telephone, so we were still doing quite a bit of the work on that. I also want you to notice our library usage. We have resource books and files, you know, we're one of the better historical societies with information and resources that we can share with people on Amherst County. We get lots of compliments about, oh, you found that for us, or you told us what deed book to go to at the courthouse and what page the will was on. So we're, we try to be very helpful that way, so we have all these book resources, but we also have what we call family files. So anytime we do research, we put that information in a file, like the Rucker File or the Ayers File, you know, or whatever it happens to be. We also have files on the towns and villages in Amherst County, on the schools. We have a report that was done on schools in 1941 that had a snapshot of the school, and they were usually one or two-room schools. The last school, the last one-room school to close was actually Mount Airy. So we, we have a lot of that, that type of history. We also have photograph files, we have wonderful scrapbooks that individuals have done for us, like the Village Garden Club, that's how we could answer the question was, when did the circle take place? Who built it? And that type of information. We have newspapers, of course, we've been slowly getting our newspapers and other information on CDs that we can look at and not handle all that paper. We have files on churches, we have files on farms and houses, a lot of people buying a house dated 1840s or more will come and want to see what we have in our files on, on this house or farmhouse. We also track the Facebook, you know, because when COVID hit, we started putting out information and like many history lessons on Facebook and got a really group going of conversations, and that still has lasted through, through this day. I just wanted to let you know that we also track volunteers, our, our museum board are volunteers. Midge, for example, does research, and she's helping people with genealogy, she worked with a woman today, you know, because she wanted to learn about her history. We also have ancestry, because so many people don't have it in their homes because it's very expensive, so we allow people to come in and use our ancestry connection. In 2021, our major focus was the Native American exhibit, which we did get completed, got up and running, but we were selecting colors and designs and patterns, selecting artifacts, trying to get permission to use artifacts, and preparing the area for the installation of that exhibit, as well as getting the walls ready and then getting the installation of the exhibit in place. Another major task that we accomplished in 2021 was organization of space for the collection. We have a huge collection, and it's not very well organized, and now I can say that we are organized, still working on it, but organized. We are finding a space for every item that we have in the collection, and we're capturing the correct information that should go into the database so that all you have to do is look it up on a computer. That task is being led by Nancy McDermott, who was a collection, worked in the collections at Sweetbrier, so she knows what she's doing, and we've also had some muscle from Buddy Jennings and Harley Burley and some of the other staffers here in the county. We also collaborated with Amherst County Public Schools, with the IT Department and the Lancers Tech Club, and we recorded, we recorded two programs, one we recorded in this room with Thomas Jefferson, and the second one we recorded here, talking about cemeteries, which is always a very favorite topic for people. And so they're ready, they've been edited, and we're having technical issues getting them uploaded, so stay tuned for that unveiling, which we hope will be very, very soon. Can I answer any questions for you?
Board?
I don't have any. Thank you, thank you for the overview.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much for the overview and the work that you do. The museum is definitely one of the gems of the county, and we appreciate what you guys do.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you all.
Can I add something to that?
Yes.
No, I'm not going to say anything. We also have brand new signage.
Can you, can you come up to the-
Oh, we do, I was saving that for the next time. Hi, I'm Midge Elliott. I also wanted to mention, we have brand new signage, thanks to some donations and funds raised through our gift shop. We now have a new sign out by our driveway, and we also have one on the front of the museum. You wouldn't believe how many people come into the museum and say, I never knew this was here. They lived here all their lives and they didn't know that it was a museum. So now hopefully with that sign right on the front of the building, they will now know that we're there. Thank you.
Well, thank you again. Thank you. Okay, so we're back at citizen comment. Are there any citizens that would like to address the board?
Good evening. Trying to make this brief, got to get up first thing in the morning, go to work. My name's Gerald Samuels, you know, I've been born and raised here in Amherst County. I have an idea that I would like to do. I would like to not only start an organization, a nonprofit, create a 501(c), I can do that number right there. I would like to be able to put a Justin A. Samuels Leave It or Take It Shed at each one of the dumpster facilities here in Amherst County, roughly an eight by 12, or whatever that facility seems to be able to allow me to have. I'm hoping to have this completed by the end of this year, and everything works really well in that situation. I just want to let y'all know of that and hope I can get y'all's blessing on that.
Gerald, of course, we talked on the phone earlier, you know, absolutely, I commend you with, with what you want to do, and I know that the shed that's been put at the Pedlar Convenience Center has done very well, and, you know, it speaks volumes for your interest in trying to make this happen at all the rest of the convenience center, so I commend you with that, and I feel certain that the board will support you 100% in this effort.
Mr. Wade?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Yeah, so, Mr. Samuels, thank you for doing this, especially in the honor of your brother, he was a great man. He was a great man. My memory is getting bad, but I'm pretty sure the board kind of gave the go-ahead for this at its last meeting. So really, all you need to do is work with Mr. Thacker and let's get this done.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good to go. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Matters for members of the board, Mr. Wade?
None.
And Sayers?
No.
I have none. Okay. Next thing is closed sessions. The two items will be a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711, subsection A. 3, for the purpose of discussion related to consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically related to the acquisition of properties located in District 5 and District 2. And the next would be a closed session pursuant to Code, Section 2.2, 3711, A. 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss a personnel matter. Board, is there a motion? Did I do that right, Mr. Popovich?
Yes, sir. Sounded right. So. I moved that the Amherst County Board of Supervisors convening closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711-A3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the purpose of discussion related to consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public use or of the disposition of publicly held real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically related to the acquisition of properties located in District 5 and District 2, and a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711-A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss a personal matter.
All right. Motion on the floor, board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. We're enclosed.
Okay, is there a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
All right, move by Mr. Ayers, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Certified on that?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
A move that the Amherst County Board of Supervisors certified by a recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session.
Motion on the floor, roll call, vote, Mr. Wee, Mr. Ayers, Mr. Martin votes, aye. All right, um, believe-
Mr. Chairman, I had one other comment I failed to bring up in Madison.
Yes, sir.
I got contacted the other day, or stopped when I went into Sam's the other day by a resident that lives across the street from the Westy Apartments there on Phelps Road. And she lives around back currently in one of the lower level apartments, but they are having problems with the residents in the Westy parking on the school side and then some of them on that side to where she can't get in, has not, had several cases, could not get in her driveway. Probably the Westy folks are using the street parking more than they are the parking lot thing. So I don't know if something can be done, whether we're gonna end up having to post that area in front of the school as no parking because I don't know what, but it's making a mess for those folks that live across the street being able to get into the driveways to get into, especially the lower level apartments, she said it's a mess.
I seem to recall about a year ago, we brought this to the board and we were gonna like put no parking signs up and put blue lines. Did we not approve that?
No, because I, I was opposed to it, um, but I, I think you may want to go out and talk with the Westy about what's happening, yes, but like-
And the property manager, I think you might be just released. I'll talk to Dave and point it.
Yep, I mean, if the folks would use the rear parking lot and leave that street parking to the residents as it's been would be, would be great.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. Ayers, anything else?
That's it.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, motion on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Of a, like, meeting adjourned.
Regina, do you need Mr. Mark's signature, you gonna wait for-